Hey, roll call.
Here.
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 Here. Everybody present? If you had a chance to allow us to skip from here, I need a motion to amend the agenda.
Motion to amend?
Keith, motion?
One second.
Noel, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll go down to the minutes. Does everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, motions or the minutes. Stand up, presented. I guess we need a financial report, but Peggy?
Yeah, in your packets, I guess, last time you had a report showing that we ended February a little over 2.5 million. General fund was in the hole at that time, but we talked about, I think it's maybe one of the meetings, that we were gonna wait to see how the sales tax did. Brought it up some, I ended up transferring 50,000 over to bring it on up. But as of today, we're still staying around that 2.5 million. We're doing good.
Doing good. At this time, did you have anything else to share on that? Verbal, would you play on that?
Which one?
Verbal?
Oh, on the...
I just put it up, you want like a comment you visited with her?
Yeah, I did. We had our electrical engineer now looking at different things, talking about the possibility of AMI meters and how we could do that, looking at financing, thinking that we'd probably go with an integrated system right now where we would end up putting in like 600 meters and all of our other meters wouldn't have to be replaced. They, you put in one meter and it'll read several other meters. So it's not a fully integrated system, but it would at least get us started. So they're out looking at bids now as to what that would cost with all of the increases. I'm sure it's gonna be more than what we probably originally thought, probably around 125,000 to 150,000 to get the base started. Still will probably take almost a year to get implemented because of getting meters in even prior to this crisis was three to four months. With the lack of production in other countries, getting those meters in may be six to eight months. We're still probably looking at least a year even after we did it. So we did talk about rates as well and definitely probably looking at some changes there as far as customer charge and some other things, but we don't know yet.
Yeah.
We're just, we're looking at it. She's gonna go back and analyze our audit that we did and just see. Because there could possibly be some things that come down the pipe that could help us in a few years. Like if the gray belt project would go through, it could possibly help. But that's several years down the road. So I just sent her back with all the information. I said, "We're not prepared to make any changes at this time." But I said, "Go back and look at it and then come back with your thoughts."
And she, she was very informational. The lady, I mean, I asked a question with, and the reason we're talking about this is because we mentioned at one of the other meetings that getting budget ready for July 1st already. But anyway, one of the questions I had with her was, can we do like a disconnect after hours at the P E? The question, the answer to that is yes, we can. So anyway, that was, but she's really a wealth of knowledge. She could go considerably faster than I can comprehend what she's telling me. That's, that's a big, very much. But anyway, kind of a heads up, she was giving us some information and what we just, we did find out it's gonna cost us more than what we initially started. But we were, we added several meters to make it a better system and...
Well, and then you're gonna be, the potential of what you can do with that system can offset your man-hours of, well, we don't have to take men out of the field to go reread a meter.
Yeah.
We can do those things ourselves. We don't have to call people in on the weekend or at night possibly to shut, to turn water on and off or electricity on and off. We can do that. It's gonna, there's a lot of other costs that it could save, which that's down the road. But we were really excited about the potential of what it can do for us.
Is there any way that system allowed, say like if a meter was, we had a leak somewhere and a meter was running way beyond the normal amount, would it give us any kind of alert on that where we could find leaks?
Yes, it could at least alert you to, and it depends. You gotta know there's, we're looking, focusing mainly on electrical right now. Water meters is another, is another venture down the road. But with it, if you have an AMI meter, you can monitor every 15 minutes what those readings are. So if somebody comes in and says, "There is no way I'm gonna use..." You can actually go back over the readings and say, "Whoa, right here. Right here's where it happened." And, "Oh, yeah, that's where," you know. So, and it will definitely can send you alerts as to what's going on. It can also be, our electric shed would have a system set up as well. It will map and grid it out to where people don't have to call in and tell us their electricity's out. We know. And it'll, and it'll grid where the potentials are. It's probably this transformer right here. So it's, it's a, it's a system that could really benefit us, I believe.
So a lovely advantage is the remote disconnect.
Yes.
And on the grid, it goes by color. You know, like if we have shut, manually shut somebody off, it'll be one color and if it's an outage, it'll be another, another color on the grid. So it, it shows the guys out in the field, you know, or at their shop, this is an outage or this is one that's been shut off. And it goes by color.
And it'll also eventually, again, down the road, give us an opportunity for prepaid. So that if you have, if people who cannot, you know, they just, they have to rent a house, maybe their credit history isn't that good for whatever reason, and they need to come in and just, they can't put down a huge deposit, they could go on a prepaid system to where they could put money down and then the system tracks it at the end of day to charge it. And when they get down to a certain point, it'll send them a text saying, "You need to add more money to your account," or, and it just automatically disconnects. So, I mean, there's, there's great opportunity for people, I think, to have more flexibility with their account down the road. We've gotta get it started to begin with.
But that was just...
Yeah, it was a very good...
Really informational. Thanks for sharing that. Suzanne?
Okay. I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank the board and the mayor for allowing me to go to conferences and increase my education on changes and stuff that we have. I went to the Missouri City Clerk and Finance Officer Conference March the night through the 12th. They presented me with a certificate of achievement for obtaining 200 college credit hours through the Southwest State University. And they, they helped keep us informed on those changes and rules and regulations. Also, I had completed the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. So I was able to obtain my certified municipal clerk degree. And so they sent me a nice little plaque and that, that makes me happy. But anyways, I just appreciate you letting me go to the conferences and be able to bring back that education and help the city. And they sent some updates on Missouri Ethics Commission's and new sunshine law books. So if you guys would like to have one to take home with you, you're welcome to. Other than that, we have some ordinances if you'd like to look at those.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations, Suzanne.
Thank you, appreciate that. Ordinance 1061 is an ordinance to amend the City of Ava, Missouri Code of Ordinances, repealing section 42-49 and replacing, and placing this section on reserve. Revising ordinance number 504, creating a new section 62-110, Sales of Tobacco to Minors, and changing the title for chapter 62, article 4, From Offenses Related to Alcoholic Beverages or Drugs to Offenses Related to Drug to Alcoholic Beverages, Tobacco or Drugs. This is just changing that age from 18 up to 21.
Motion to approve ordinance, first reading of ordinance 1061. Noel, made a motion. We do have a second.
I have a second.
They have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? We just, well, you wanna have a second reading just well too?
Yeah, who's second of the motion?
Billy.
And who, first?
Bill.
No.
No, okay, I didn't hear, no, I'm sorry. Okay, so on the second reading, number 1061, An Ordinance to Amend the City of Ava, Missouri Code of Ordinances, Repealing Section 42-49 and Placing This Section on Reserve, Revising Ordinance Number 504, Creating a New Section 62-110, Sales of Tobacco to Minors, and Changing the Title for Chapter 62, Article 4, From Offenses Related to Alcoholic Beverages or Drugs to Offenses Related to Alcoholic Beverages, Tobacco or Drugs.
We do have a motion to...
Motion to approve ordinance 1061, second reading.
I'll second that motion.
Keith, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go. And ordinance 1062 has to do with a contract with the state on the signs in the city limits, the noise ordinance signs with MoDOT.
Early, is that, those signs, the verbiage on there, is that just noise ordinance enforced? Is that the verbiage on that?
You can't, you can't use, that's about all you're allowed. You can't use like brake brakes, nothing like that. It's got to be a noise ordinance.
Okay. First reading, ordinance number 1062 is an ordinance accepting and approving a contract, said document called Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Agreement for signing installed and maintained by applicant by and between the City of Ava and the Missouri Highways and Transportation, Transportation Commission.
A motion for the first reading? I make a motion to approve the first reading of 1062. Okay, we got Billy. We got a second?
And I'll second.
Noel, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the second reading for ordinance 1062 is an ordinance accepting and approving a contract, said document called Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Agreement for signing installed and maintained by applicant by and between the City of Ava and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
Motion to approve the second reading?
Motion to approve second reading, ordinance 1062.
Keith, second, I'm not there. Stan, all in favor?
Aye.
Alden, have any comments? I'm gonna jump, let me, let me go, I've got kinda all over this. Let's start with this, the truck. And I give you a photograph, a picture of it. It's a 2019 three-quarter ton truck that, that we can, we can purchase at 29,000 and do a little switching around. We bought, we purchased a truck for the water department two, three months ago. This truck here would better serve them. And then what I'd like to do, if you're all in favor of it, is purchase this truck, take, give it to the water department and get the extended cab truck and transfer it over to the brush crew, which is the old, the old red Dodge, and it's, it's served its time. And, but anyway, Jim's Body Shop has this truck. It has a salvage title. It has 8,400 miles on it. And it blue booked with average condition, like I think it's 34?
Around 34.
34. And new, it bucks out at 40 the way it's equipped. But we can purchase it at 29. And, but I'm just asking permission to, and I've checked with Peggy on the financing on it. We're okay financially to purchase it. And with your permission, I'd like to purchase it and then switch them around to different departments and get them to where they need to be.
It still smells new, as of next day.
I wouldn't be concerned about it having a salvage title, you know. If we're gonna keep it until we wear it out anyway, and once you wear it out, it doesn't matter.
And you know how the highway patrol, they, they put them through it. They just don't go out and sign off.
The truck would really serve the purpose that, that we needed for and it'll last us a long time. And we are in dire need of replacing some of the smaller vehicles right now. And this, this will serve a good purpose now.
I believe we could come close to buying a vehicle like that that's still in Springfield to start looking.
To answer that question, you can't find one. I looked for several months trying to find one, a single cab. And that's what I really wanted, but the last one, I couldn't find one. But was that a motion, Stan?
Oh, yeah, that's a motion.
I'm going to get purchase a 2019 Chevrolet pickup. And that was 29, correct? 29,000? Yes, 29,000. Do we, do we have a second on that?
Yeah, I said, "Okay."
Okay, any other further discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, now then I'll start on my list. We went to tag me, and I'll try to go through them as quickly as possible, not if we can, but we had a tag me in February the 27th. And there was some money this time that we could get. What was there, seven different counties? All trying to get a little bit of it. And anyway, we, we had, there was 22, 22 different projects and they wanted, and there was 6.3 million dollars available and, or just a little over that. And they, this money needed to go to shovel-ready jobs. And anyway, we just happened to have two, two in Douglas County, and well, I guess one and a half in Douglas County and the other half is in Ozark County. And what they are, this money within the next year and year and a half probably, will go to fix this roundabout over here on the north side of town that nobody knows what it is. And I wanna clarify, that is, that is MoDOT, that's not city. But anyway, that, that will go to fix it. Where we do, it's defined and we know what it is. And then the other shovel-ready we, we share with Douglas and Ozark County will be, we actually wanted a wide shoulder from A Highway just south of town to Gainesville. And, but we're gonna get a two-foot rumble strip, which, which will serve the purpose. It'll take care of that drop-off shoulder that we have in different locations. But it, it looks like we're finally gonna get something like that accomplished on that. But we've, we've worked on that for a long time. And that's, we still have these other projects on the list. And that's Y Highway, Wildcat Bridge, which we all know is a dangerous thing. Peggy can testify to that. And then the Bright Bridge out on East 14. But they're still on the list. And that, but with that 6.4, 6.3 million dollars, that'll take care of five projects out of 22, the surrounding counties that we had on that list. So, and that's a plus, I think. It'd been, I don't, there hadn't been a whole lot accomplished and it looks like we're gonna get something done. And we're gonna, we're gonna gang a little bit from it, or not the city really, but our community, yeah. And we closed out March the 4th on the generators that we had installed with that. And I say closed out, basically we had, they're, they're still reimbursed. We paid for the total amount and they, they're still holding back 5%, which is a negative...
4,000.
4,000 and some odd dollars. So, and so we will get that check from FEMA. But we got a check from them that, for the amount of 93,442 dollars. And then we, that was deposited in our account and then we gave that to total generator. And then, and, but anyway, we, FEMA still owes us about 4,500. But, and that'll be totally done. And I did talk to the total generator out of Stratford and done our generator, hooked these up for us here. And the one we have out at the well, Crosland Edition, I talked to him about hooking it up on our well, one of our wells here in town. And he hasn't, it's not a firm price, but it looks somewhere in the neighborhood of $3,000 to pull that generator into town. And we'll have to buy a new switch for it because it's different phases. That's a three-phase 278 and this is a three-phase 480. I believe, I believe I'm telling you right. But anyway, it's a different switch. I thought a switch is a switch, but that's not true. But anyway, that, that brought the price up more than I wanted it to. But anyway, it's gonna be, he's gonna get back with me, but I'm thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,000 to get a generator hooked up on one of our wells here in town. If we have an outage, we can, but these generators here for your information really, they come on every Monday morning and it's just, it's just a blink and they run for 50 minutes and they kick off. And if you blink your eye, you'll miss it. So they're working here. This is a working project, working process.
Yeah.
Yeah. In the process. I'm trying to find out attachments on our towers. We've got antennas all over our towers. And I don't know who's hooked up on them. I mean, and some of them appear that they're, they're not, they've abandoned them. But I'm in, we are in the process of finding out who all's attached and getting a contract with each one of them. And, but we've got some of them rundown already. And, but, but anyway, that's, you'd think you could just go to the town and figure out who's, who's antenna, but that's not the way it is. There's, there's towers, there's antennas. There's several up at Mike's house there. We don't have any idea of who they are. But we're trying to find out and make sure that we have contracts.
Pick the wire and go front of the house.
Yeah, there you go.
Probably waiting to give us a lot of money.
Yeah, I would say they're, and they just didn't know where to send it.
Didn't know where to send it.
But we, we are working on that and we'll, we'll eventually get contracts with the people that are hooked, hooked to them. So, and the sewer project on the northeast corner of town, it is completely done now. And as far as I know, I, I think it's really serving the purpose of what we intend.
Been tested.
And I have never seen that manhole that the old law night station raised up since then. And we're totally hooked up on it now.
And we've had a lot of rains that would've done it.
I think, I think we made a good move there and, and didn't spend a whole lot of money. And our city employees done the, done the whole thing. They done a really good job, so. The election, I think probably everybody's heard that they moved it from April the 7th and to June the 2nd. You're probably aware of that already, but I wanted to make... This is a, I've got, these windows over here were in the billing department. I've, I've just contacted some glass people and I'm concerned about people coming in here and irate. And the ladies are pretty vulnerable back there. But I, I'm gonna try to figure, see what it would cost us to maybe put a glass and a tray between them. Not a, not an opening, a tray. And, but anyway, I've called some, a glass company out of West Plains and two out of Springfield and, you know, there's not a big hurry on that. But I'd like the next meeting, maybe have some numbers and, and see what y'all think about that and let you know. But just for safety reasons, they're, they're just back there and it concerns me that they don't have any protection whatsoever. So anyway, hopefully by the next, next meeting, I'll have some numbers I'd like to, like to show you and see what you all think about that. Okay, let's get on the big topic of this coronavirus and, and what we're doing. Of course, we're, we're following everything that comes down from the governor and CDC. We're watching our numbers, what we have here. And with our employees on the outside, I've notified them in the different departments. And we're keeping them, I guess, isolated basically. I don't know how to really phrase it to their department. I don't, I don't want them going over to the other ones and, but just kinda stay in your, your department because these, we gotta keep the employees healthy because they're the ones that are gonna keep our town, the water, the sewer, the electric and all that going. So I wanna keep them separated as much as possible. And if there's any other ideas like that that you can think of, I would be welcome to. We wanna, we wanna do everything we can to keep the public safe and, and be able to serve them until this, this epidemic is over. I mean, this is a...
I think at this point in time, with zero positive cases in Douglas County, you know, just following the governor's directive of social distancing and no, no social gatherings over 10 people, maintain six feet, you know, between people and good physical hygiene.
And that's, that's what when, that's what we've been notified to do and just, just use compensants. And, and that's what we're doing. And, and we are, as you can see here, we're trying to keep our numbers down 10 or less. And, and for the licensed, the troop G headquarters...
Driver examiners.
Driver's examiners, thank you.
They've...
They, go ahead.
Postpone that until, I think, further notice.
Yeah, until further notice. So anyway, they was in here last Sun, last, last Sunday, last Thursday. And they really, I commend them, the way they handled that. They had just the people that were taking tests in here at the time. And if it was apparent or something, they had them to wait in the car. So they, they handled the situation very well. But anyway, they won't be here until further notice, so.
Their, their website said April 6th.
Okay.
But we know that, that's subject to the channel.
And what I wanted to talk to you about is, you know, we've, our restaurants now are shut down by order. That was as of, of course, a lot of them shut down before. But by order as of 12:01 last night, they were, you know, shut down. You could carry out, but, but no dining in. But there's gonna be a layoff. And this is, it concerns me. And this is something that I want, I'm looking for guidance from the council. How, how do we handle situations where somebody has been laid off and they can't meet their utility bills? And what I would ask of the council, can I handle this on a base by base, you know?
Case by case.
Yeah, case by case, yes. And I would, and something that, I would want these, these cases to come in before the 25th, you know, or the billing is due the 15th. And I would want these people to come in and make contact and, or call or make an appointment or, and, and I would recommend what I would suggest anyway is, is let me know where you, where you worked at and, and a phone number. Because I don't want this, I don't wanna... Because I don't want this, I don't want to, I want to help them, but I don't want it to be abused. So it's something we got to be really careful about. And, but I want, as a council, I want to be able to help the people that are in need in any way we can. And we're going to have a few that are going to get laid off. And not just here, but, you know, Springfield shut down. There's going to be people that live within the city limits and possibly need help. But I want, I think, I'm asking if they call here and explain to me, you know, I worked so-and-so and I got laid off, and we can verify that. Permission to work with them, or they can meet their obligation, maybe not this month, but the next month? And what does council think about that?
I think that sounds good to me, just managing on a case-by-case basis.
Case by case, yeah.
And I think that will work. We obviously don't cause a hardship on anyone. And this is going to take place on the next billing cycle.
Yeah, it's not, it's not going to affect this billing cycle because it's, this billing cycle actually was due the 15th. And so this billing cycle is not affected. It'll be the coming billing.
They need to start this review before it's, they're delinquent and everything else.
Yeah, after the 15th, it's past due, and that's an added charge. So this is something that needs to be, it needs to be taken care of by the customer prior to the 15th. And, but with permission from the council, and that's the way I would like to handle it if I could. I think that's reasonable, especially right now with no confirmed cases as of now in Douglas County. And, but like you said, we've got a few people that have lost their jobs here in town with the restaurant situation. And, you know, I'm sure there's going to be more. But right now, as low as the numbers are going to be, I think that would be great. And then, you know, if this takes a turn for the worse, we'll just have to reassess and do something later. At a later point, if, you know, this becomes a problem around here. Luckily, right now, we've been pretty fortunate, so.
We really have.
Yeah, we have been. And like Keith said earlier, we have not, zero confirmed cases.
Zero confirmed cases as of right now.
That's right, that's good news, so.
But I think we obviously want to help those that, if they do have hardship, they have lost their job, then there may be, based on a case-by-case basis, there may be times we have to give them more time.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just
Or set up a payment plan or something, we're going to have to work with everybody, yeah. And it sounds like there might be some assistance in the near future. I think you mentioned something about it earlier that
Yeah, I think the federal government is willing to start issuing checks April 6th. I think, you know, a thousand dollars per wager in a family, a family of four with husband, wife, and four kids, they can get $3,000. So hopefully, that will be helpful to
Keith, you know, I didn't check on this today. Has the unemployment office, have they waived the waiting week or anything like that, or any requirements?
I can't answer that.
I didn't check on that today. I didn't know if they had or not.
Yeah, I don't know.
I guess, do we need a motion for that? Do you think it'd be better to? I think we probably ought to have a motion that we address the issue on a case-by-case basis and with customers in need. And I believe it would be better if we had a motion to that extent. If somebody would be
All right, I'll make a motion that we give the mayor the authority to, on a case-by-case basis of his discretion, assist customers who have been affected by the coronavirus layoffs on their, with their utilities.
With layoffs and lost a job.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Keith seconded that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got to look over my scribbling to see if there's anything I left out. I was going to mention about the next meeting, you know, unless something comes up. Let's just plan on having a meeting on the fourth Tuesday of next month. But if something comes up, I'll notify you. And we can have a meeting on the second Tuesday if something, if we need to. But I'll keep you all informed as we go. And hopefully, some warm, dry weather will help us out in this situation that we're in right now. And I firmly believe that that's what we need. And I've heard that other comment from people that do, that are in the medical profession. So some warm, dry weather, I guess we can pray for that. Okay, I did about, just about forgot about the, we had a pump to go out at the wastewater treatment plant. We're getting prices on that. So it was a pretty good-sized one, but 15-horse pump. And Stephen Davis is getting some prices. So we never know whether it's going to be something we can rebuild or is it, or we're going to have to purchase a new one. But we'll, we should know something probably tomorrow. So if it's a big item, I'll give you a call and let you know what it is. But it's something that we got to have. And, but anyway, if it's a big costly, big expense, I will let you know.
Okay.
If there's not anything else in open session, I'd like to have a motion go into close.
I make a motion to go into closed session.
Got a second?
A second.
Stan, second, all in favor?
Aye.
We went through a quid pro quo.